Good evening and welcome to the December 4th Ames Community School District Board Meeting. Directors, before I have a motion for approval of the agenda, item number five was mistakenly included on the under discussion items and it needs to be moved to action as improvement is required by the state by December 15th for the application. So that's item number five. If someone could move approval with that amendment, please.
Move to amend the agenda and move number item five to action item that would become 13?
Second.
It's been moved by Rosser and seconded by Briggs. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay? Passes? Six, zero. Director Briggs, will you please read the mission statement?
The mission of the Ames Community Schools is to ensure that all learners develop the knowledge, skills, attitudes, values, and personal esteem necessary to grow in and shape a changing society.
Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and read our district statement on discussion items. Residents of the district, students attending the districts, parents or guardians of students attending the district, and district staff members may address the board about any topic relevant to the district, whether on the current agenda or not. Those who wish to speak must sign up at the beginning of the meeting. Speaker participation is limited to three minutes once per item. The views and opinions of citizens addressing the board do not necessarily reflect those of the board, district administration, or staff. Speakers are to remember that Iowa law prohibits the board from discussing specific employees, students, or their performance. Student speakers will state their name and school. Others will state their name and address. And our first item tonight is committee work. Does anybody have anything they'd like to highlight?
Jeanne and I do have an update for the city and county conference board. We followed up and the mini-conference board is on January 11th and then the full conference board will be on January 23rd. That's important because the school district helps set the Sessors budget for the year, so we will be reviewing that. And then the county conference board, the date has not yet been finalized but it likely to be end of January, middle of February.
Okay, great. And I had discussed with a couple of you, we have asked, we are asking those who serve on the city conference board to also be on the county conference board to provide some efficiencies there, but we also believe that there are some things that will relate. So I talked to all four of those individuals that were involved and they were all very supportive of that shift, so we are shifting it. So Director Perez and Dierdorf will be serving, representing us on those, both of those boards, so.
We do have a policy committee meeting this Friday at 8:30 and also at 9 o'clock on this Friday is a meeting of the teaching and learning committee. Am I correct with that one, Dr. Ross, this Friday, 9 o'clock?
Any other updates? Any comments, questions on polit, on our committee work from the public? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move to the next item, transportation. Chris.
At the last board meeting, Dr. Taylor mentioned that I had been working on an RFP for transportation services for, at least starting the next fiscal, or school year. The three-year contract with Durham does expire at the end of the current school year. As I see it at this point in time, we have two options. One, that we could go ahead and issue an RFP. I've got it, for the most part, done. I've got a few little things to get done, but get that out by the 15th of December, which is about the same timing as the, we did one three years ago for a decision early in February. Or that we could extend Durham's contract for one year, which again, I have to give notice by the end of December if we're going to do that. Either option would allow us to contract with consultants to do a study. However, I don't believe that we would be able to have a new company that would be willing to come in here for less than a three-year contract if they're going to make that kind of a commitment to, if a, if a new company would be successful in the RFP. So those are really the two options that I see at this point. I don't believe that we have the time to bring this in-house in the next six months. And I do think it would be important to have some transportation expert consultants come in and look at our system, not only whether the efficiencies of having it in-house versus outsourced, but also how we deliver transportation in, in Ames. And if there are any models or suggestions it could give us that would be, result in some cost savings. So I think we just wanted to get a consensus from the board on where you want us to proceed from here.
I think part of this was also conversations that Chris and I and Director Briggs had relative to bringing it back in-house. We were looking at, at the total costs, as you can see on the exhibit, of what we've been spending for transportation in the district. And what came to our attention is as we began to look at comparabilities to districts that are about our size, we were much higher. Part of what we discovered is the number of routes we're running, the amount of discretionary transportation that we're providing, in addition to numerous other things that we wanted to investigate in a cost analysis, which is very difficult for us to do. We did make a request to Durham for information relative to labor costs, but that's a proprietary right. They don't have to give that information to us and they were courteous in their expression of no, you may not have that information. And I think Director Briggs may want to add to this, but as we began to look at this and taking a look at the number of routes that we have and what has kind of transpired over the past few months, we wanted to see if it was possible to bring this thing in-house. And if we can, that would be great, if it can be a cost savings. On the other hand, I did have a conversation with a person who's in transportation that I respected and have respected for a number of years and he had a very interesting question for me. He says, "Do you just want somebody to blame or do you just want actually to bring it in-house and see if you can do it much more efficiently?" Of course, the second one was my answer. From that, Chris happened to discover that Iowa City did a transportation study where an independent consultant came in from the outside and was able to take a look at how they delivered their services for transportation. And it became very, I guess, appealing, I think, to me and I think to Chris and eventually to Director Briggs, that maybe the thing that we could do is bring this independent consultant in, have him take a look at how we deliver our program or our services and then make it a more database decision in the future. But I'll let Director Briggs take over from this part.
So basically, we, we looked at a rough estimate for number of routes and positions that we knew existed. We looked at some generalized estimates of what the industry that we did know for cost of employment was. And what we came down to was a conclusion that we are spending more than likely more money than we would if we did it internally, but we don't know that for sure. The only way we're really going to get to the bottom of that is if we do an independent analysis. We don't have time to do that before we need to go to RFP or extend this contract. That being said, I also had a conversation with a friend of mine who works in the industry and he strongly encouraged that going to RFP now puts anybody who wins that contract, if it isn't the current company, behind the curve as far as getting everybody hired, getting everybody checked, vetted, the situation on the ground set up so that they can kick off school year without any issues. After all those conversations, it's my personal opinion that we are best suited to do the independent analysis. And as much as I'm not necessarily wanting to do it, I think the best course of action is to give a one-year extension to Durham services with a few stipulations in place with regards to some stabilities. We did the same thing three years ago when we extended their contract and while it worked for the first year or so, it seems to have fallen apart. What that does is that gives us an opportunity to get the study done and conducted, bring that information back to the board so the board can make a solid decision whether we're going to bring it in-house or if we're going to continue to contract the service out. Then we can, from there, make the decision going forward in a timeframe that doesn't put the district behind the curve or potentially the next company that would take the contract if not Durham. So there's time to set up all those efficiencies and not have the catastrophic start of the school year that we experienced this year. I, I realize that's not necessarily something that members of the community are going to want to hear that Durham continues to be the provider, but my caution to them is that with it being so late in the year, we are likely not going to get a better outcome with a new company because of that timing. And there's no guarantee that Durham isn't going to win a three-year contract. Last time we looked at this, we ran to RFP, Durham was the low bidder. It, it wasn't even close. It was easy to say no to the other guy and really hard to say yes to them. So there's no guarantees we're going to resolve the issue just going to RFP. I leave it to the rest of you to kind of debate and discuss.
Ms. Tenzlin, how long for the outside consultant to do that study? How long did they say they needed to do that?
Well, until I had gotten an okay to contact him, I haven't contacted. I've been in touch with several other business managers who have brought consultants in. I, I think it's a couple months. I don't think it's a, it's not a year, but it's certainly more time than what we have to make a decision for next year. And maybe we sent the RFP out really late last, last time, but I am right on the same schedule as we were sending the RFP out three years ago. The only difference is we are doing a combined RFP for both the fleet and the, the operations. And last year, they did the operations and then they did the fleet RFP a month later. And I, I have heard from some of the, the operators that the reason they didn't bid last time was that there was two separate RFPs and it wasn't, they weren't assured of getting, one might get operations and one might get the fleet, which could be an interesting combination. Whether there's enough time, I guess I, I figured that's kind of their area of expertise and they should know whether they can get up and start it or not. From the people who have been contacting me, I, I think we're going to have interest. I'm not opposed to either option. I think we should probably bring in, I think, and Iowa City's was a couple, the, the business manager who had been at Iowa City is now at West Des Moines, used the same company at, at both. He, he liked him so much from Iowa City, he brought him into West Des Moines. And Davenport also used the same company. I kind of did a search and they seem to be the only one that doesn't have skin in the game. They consult, but they don't provide transportation services. So it's, it's really a very neutral consultant. Now, I forget where I was going with that. So I think we should do that anyway because I think we need to have someone take a look at how we deliver transportation in Ames to see if we, if there's more efficient ways to do it, whether the amount of discretionary busing that we're doing is correct compared to other school districts. That's really, I think, the big cost differences when we compare to other districts. So I'm not opposed to either way. I, whether we go out to RFP and have a three-year do the study or extend with, with Durham, yeah, it was a horrendous start to the school year. It was, we all agree. It's calmed down. Can't guarantee it, but I'm, I would hope that they would have. I mean, obviously, a lot of the issues they had was because they were short so many drivers at the beginning of the year.
The, I guess, the question I have is, in my mind is, why can't we do both? And yes, that means, so in other words, bring in the consultant, have them at the same time doing the work and then put out the RFPs because the RFPs are going to be, the, the deadline would be what, mid-February?
I would hope to have a decision back, for the board to make a decision on the February 5th board meeting.
Okay.
Those were the timeframes from last time, except for the fleet, which was a month later.
Right.
So I would have it out by December 15th, have the mandatory attendance meetings right after we get back from break, have, have RFPs back middle to late January with a decision made February 5th.
Okay.
Which should give them time to staff up for the end of school. Might have some adjustments on summer school, but.
So that's the RFPs and the companies that we put in for that.
Yes.
And then at the same time, we could be having the consultant doing their evaluation of whether we should bring it house or not. So at the same time, then we could be making that decision with all the information on the table if, and yes, I agree with you, that in the end, might end up, Durham ends up getting the three-year contract again from the RFP process. But I, I'd rather not, to be blunt, I'd rather not give them another year. We've struggled, we struggled with them, not only this last year, we, we struggled with them three years before that or four years before that and then it was good for a year. I, I, I feel uncomfortable, you know, rewarding them in a sense and giving them one more year to, to, to get, get things straight. So I think we should take some action. So if we have that ability to do the evaluation internally, decide whether we can bring it in-house, and if we get the report back from the consultant says eh, no, it's not going to work, then we have the RFPs ready to go. Does that make sense?
Well, I think the only.
I'm picking up a lot.
Yeah, I think the only issue with that is that if Director Briggs already feels we're behind the, the curve on getting the RFP out for a company, a new company potentially to come in and get out, started, going through a study and then issuing an RFP, which would probably put it into March, April, that's not going to work at all.
Why would it, no.
I'll elaborate on that because while the industry basically says, "Yeah, we'll, we'll bid on that contract," they want the business, obviously. They're, they're, they're going to work with us no matter what we do. The person that I talked to isn't a corporate guy. He's someone whose boots on the ground, does a lot of the behind-the-scenes stuff that has to happen in order to get the process rolling. And what he told me flat out is that putting an RFP out at the start of the year, being the January time period, we're behind the curve. Because all the things that have to happen behind the scenes that get pushed on to the people that aren't the ones bidding, but the actual employees, creates a lot of strain on that. And it's his personal opinion that we are going to put ourselves in a position to fail, either if we do it ourselves or if someone else comes in and wins that contract. And it would be better served for us, excuse me, for us, if we just wait six months to do the RFP if we go that route at the start of the school year, giving whomever wins that contract the time appropriate to get all those pieces in place so that we don't have a conflict when we start the year, whether it's Durham, us, or somebody else that wins that contract. I, I don't want to set the next company up or ourselves up for failure because we waited too long. And we don't know what that's going to look like or take because Durham's had this contract for over six years. So who's to say the RFP isn't too far back? No one sitting here, other than maybe Dr. Taylor, has experienced the joys of going through this process and changing companies.
But I think that consultant's probably going to be able to give us some idea also too, because they're going to have some information related to that, so they'll be able to give us some informed and educated advice on that. I'm assuming that would be part of their recommendation to us, is to, I mean, they could say, you know, do something short-term, you know, and, and then gear up if you're bringing it in-house, gear up later on, so.
Go ahead. I, I just want to clarify, so are you saying that you bring the independent consultant in and if they, if their advice to us is to bring it in-house in February, then we would have to get ourselves organized for that next, for the fall?
Correct. They, I think they.
But I think what I'm hearing though from staff is, is that that would not be enough time for us in February to the start of the school year to get, bring that in-house. That seems like a monumental change, but please help me. I'm not.
I would think, and Dr. Taylor can add his sentiments, I would think that if we were going to bring in-house, we should have already had a transportation director hired that could start looking at routes, getting, we have to buy routing software, we have to get it all set up. There's all this stuff that Durham has that we would have to bring in. All the drivers have to be hired, all the, the, the training has to be done. The fleet has to be purchased and leased or leased, whichever we're going to do. I, it's difficult enough to get transportation up and running, but when you're starting from scratch. I mean, even, even when districts are already in-house, it's difficult getting up and going for the next school year.
Well, I think that's what a consultant would.
The biggest difficulty is finding drivers. It's going to be finding drivers.
Yeah, yeah. I think that's what a consultant, I mean, I, this is what I propose, that we have, that a, that consultant that you're referring to, assuming we've already reached out to that consultant from, you said, that worked with West Des Moines.
I haven't reached out to the consultants yet. I was waiting.
But, but they were the two.
Yeah.
If we could have them come, I'm sure they'd be happy to come and chat with us if, we might employ them. And they could ask some of these questions for us and see if it's even, you know, reasonable for us to be thinking about that.
In your discussions with the business managers at West Des Moines and Iowa City, what did they learn from these consultants?
Well, actually, it's, it's, it was interesting because Iowa City was already outsourced and the consultants recommended they stay outsourced. West Des Moines, they, they weren't really looking to go outsourced. They were looking for a study on the efficiency of their system and whether there was cost savings that could be had. So it was a little bit different situation. Johnston obviously did the big study to determine whether to go in-house or, or stay in-house or go outsourced. But as they went through that study, one of the major changes they made was they were providing busing to every student and that changed. It went to the statutory limits. So when I talk about delivering transportation aims, that's what I'm talking, one of the main things, because I think if we're going to be looking for cost savings on transportation and I think that's probably something we're going to have to do as we go through the next couple of years with state funding or the lack thereof, is that we're going to have to look at whether we can continue to afford what we're providing. I don't have the expertise to do that. I don't have the expertise to run the models that says, "What happens if we only do the statutory? What happens if we do a modified, like a mile for elementary and three miles for secondary?" That's what the consultant would do. But also then would be able to tell us based on the market whether being outsourced for Ames is best or bringing it in-house.
And Chris, that would be my argument for saying time is of the essence. The sooner we can get that consultant in here in front of us to answer our questions to see if it's even possible for us to do that, the sooner we will have answers as we go into our budgeting process this spring.
And I'll caveat off of that, the reason I am recommending that we go forward with a one-year extension versus the three-year contract is if we go into a three-year contract, odds are we're going to be spending even more money than we are currently. From what I can tell, we're already spending more money than we should be. If we go to RFP now, based on the model and information that we have currently for that RFP bid, we're going to end up in a contract based upon our current system. So even if we change how we deliver and reduce our costs, what that ends up doing is increasing their company's profit gain instead of making our costs less. We're not going to see that. If we, if we enter into a contract with them for X, X, and X, even if we change how many routes we're going to get, we're still paying them that contracted rate for three years. So I'd rather see the savings internally and I think the best way to go about doing that, if that be the best course of action, is just give the one-year extension, get the analysis done, figure out if it's best to keep it in-house or go back out, and then go from there. Otherwise, I think if we find out we can bring it in-house and do it for cheaper, we're going to end up just making someone else benefit from that for three years.
There's going to be some difficult decisions by the board with information coming back from the consultant. And what I mean by difficult decisions is how much do you want to reduce the number of routes? How much do you want to reduce, for instance, discretionary busing that we can, that we do at the current time? So once we have that information and can come to an agreement on what it's going to look like, then the RFP that goes out will be more accurate. Hopefully, we'll be, we're going to realize some savings in that in the future, I hope.
You mentioned, correct me if I'm wrong, but what was the drop-dead date of telling Durham if we wanted to do a one-year extension? What would be the latest we'd have to tell them?
The end of December.
Okay. My thought was trying to employ this consultant to get us up and going, so more of telling us what we need to do as far as from here until start of the year, helping us as a, as a director for transportation to get us to that point. But if we only have until December, I was hoping it might be later in the year, but we don't have that flexibility.
That tells me something too. If that drop-dead date is the middle of December and we're waiting to go out for RFP until February, there's a big difference there in time. And I'm guessing that the, the December date would be for them to have enough time to prepare for next year. Well, February would be that much less time, just to kind of go with what Director Briggs had said.
So from what I'm picking up here, we'll have Chris contact the consultant, see their availability, and come back on the 19th. We'll see perhaps if they can even be here on the 19th to talk to the board, but come back with maybe some kind of proposal from them relative to their study for the district.
18th or 18th?
18th, I'm sorry.
We know what she meant.
Do we come up with the routes or, or the, the transportation company comes up with the routes? Does that happen?
The routes are usually determined by the transportation company. So a consultant's going to take a look at what we're currently doing and probably, my guess is, they're going to tell us that we need to reduce the number of routes, A, for a savings. And from that information, then we kind of take off from there.
I'll add to that, the, the routes are determined by the transportation company, but they're determined based upon the riders that we provide them.
It's all put into a routing software. So once we know what a student's school of attendance is, their address is put in there, the routing software routes them and, and takes, takes into consideration all the students that would be on a particular route to determine where the route starts, what the times are that have, so yes, it's selected by, I mean, the, the transportation company does it, but the routing software determines the most efficient way the routes run based on the number of riders that we tell them are going to be riding.
So how is it going right now? Do we, have we heard anything or is it going okay? Have we had?
We have not had, the last, I'd say since maybe the middle of October, we haven't had any real calls to our offices.
Do we know if they hired more drivers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any idea from your discussions with business managers, what's the range that, the cost for hiring this independent consultant?
The, the Iowa City paid $14,500 for their study. The, the Iowa City paid $14,500 for their study.
Any other questions or comments on this? Thank you for bringing it back to us. Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move on to item six, since item five was moved to our action items, and that's the pool discussion.
There are several people, I'm certain, that will be involved in this discussion. We did meet, and this is really kind of an update for the board, we did meet with the Ames Cyclones Aquatic Club with Jeremy Galvin and also with Jason Horace. I think I saw Jason walk in, and I see Mike Peterson, the, the ACAC coaches here. And it really was a, an extensive meeting that we had last Thursday. It involved President Franzen, Vice President Dierdorf, Chris, myself, along with Jason and Jeremy, but also Ron Peeler from Allers Law Firm. The purpose of that was initially to sit down and take a look at what the 28E agreement would be between the Ames Community School District and ACAC relative to operation of a swimming pool or operation of a new swimming pool. There were several items that were put together in a, kind of in a memo from ACAC to the district that included their desire to help us with some in-kind contributions, their desire to provide at least $100,000 towards the operation through some of their revenue, but also through the in-kind contributions. But also, the bigger item that was of our discussion was their current efforts and ongoing efforts at the current time for an endowment, which would then help support ACAC, but in the long run would also help support us as a school district in the operation of that swimming pool. And the pool, of course, is, is very important to us for the competition level, but it also provides us some classroom space for many of our handicapped kids that we have at Ames High School that we happen to get in the swimming pool. It also might, might open up some other kinds of instruction that we can provide through our PE classes. It's not very desirable at the current time for some of our kids in high schools who take swimming, but I think if we were offering something like a life-saving certificate or something of that nation, nature from Red Cross, it might attract some kids to do that in our PE classes. We'd have to adjust our schedules, but that's something we'd want to look at. The, the end result of all of this was part of what we had visited with ACAC about was the fact that it looks like it's about $200,000 for us to operate a pool on an annual basis. Around $50,000 of that, they were going to provide from in-kind, in-kind contributions for janitorial services, for training, for management and scheduling as part of their use agreement, plus somewhere in the neighborhood of $50,000 to help for the operational cost. We were going to put in $75,000, but that was nothing that this board had essentially approved at any point. It was part of a discussion. I thought that there was maybe some consensus along that line, but from my standpoint, until I actually have approval from a board that says, yes, $75,000 is okay for us to contribute towards, out of the general fund for that purpose, then I would feel more comfortable. And I think before I turn this over to Luke and Alisa and probably Chris to make some comments on this, I think this is something that one of the school districts over along, I keep getting confused whether it was Davenport or Dubuque, but I think it was Davenport came up with a very similar agreement as this one with their swimming club along there. I believe they're called Dash. But as part of this, the thing that I've been searching for through the past few years is, is how can we come up with an arrangement that provides a comfort level from this board that going into that arrangement, it's going to be something that will be solid for not just a few years, but for 50 or 60 years if necessary? I think we're well on the way to get that. We talked about the endowment and what would happen if ACAC would happen to evaporate or decide they didn't want to be a part of what we're involved in. We are going to be working very closely with Ron Peeler over the next couple of months, trying to put that 28E agreement together, going back and forth with ACAC until we can reach some kind of an arrangement that we can bring back for the board. I'm going to quit at this point and turn it over to Luke and Alisa or Chris if they've got some other things that they want to mention, but I believe those are the biggest points from our meeting from last Thursday. Trying to make you comfortable with where we're going and what we're doing is, is what this discussion is all about.
As Dr. Taylor discussed, I think where we're at now with the board is deciding, is $75,000 reasonable for us to invest? We've talked a lot about that number. Dr. Taylor's assured us that that's what we can afford and that's his recommendation, but we've never had a point for the board to say, are we okay with that? We're not trying to get a formal approval tonight, but what ACAC is attempting to do is actively fundraise for this endowment, and we have a lot more work to do. A lot of the details have to be ironed out. What we learned from the agreement with the city of Ames is that that agreement probably wasn't as fine-tuned as we would have hoped 50 years ago, and so making sure we do this right now, I think is really important, but we need to keep moving forward. Point being, the high school is on the horizon and trying to figure out, do we include that in the referendum? Do we not? We really need to come to, I think, a conclusion here in December that we want to move forward with the project. So the plan is tonight to have a preliminary discussion, come back and do a work session on the 18th to say, okay, we're, we're on board with this in principle. We'll continue to work on the 28E agreement into the beginning of the year. Again, a lot of details have to be ironed out. From all my work for the last couple of years on this, I think this is by far the best opportunity the district has to move it forward. We've looked at every single avenue, private types of arrangements, but this, I think, protects our student programming in the best way we can while providing a great activity and just, that makes our kids' experience here at Ames High so much better, inner-school district so much better. So I'm supportive of the $75,000. I'm supportive of expending the capital to get this done because I think it's going to be a great thing for our community. We want to have an opportunity for the board to say, are you guys okay with $75,000? What additional questions you may have? Part of note, this endowment piece, one of the question I had is how's that going to work? In, in concept, we've been talking about this $100,000 coming from ACAC. Their plan is likely to create this endowment where they're going to go out and solicit donations. This money would likely be housed at the Story County Foundation that could be restricted for use. So generally, 4% or 5% could come out of this endowment to support this $100,000 contribution that they're making. But the key, the point key I keep pushing back on is what happens if ACAC either goes out of existence or decides to go somewhere else? And they've assured us that they would like to have that transferable to the district to protect that. So I think that's, again, a great good faith statement that they want to see us be successful, even if they're not there. And to me, that's the bridge that gets this done. So again, a ton of details have to be worked out, but I'm very encouraged on what our discussions to date. The city of Ames is continuing to move forward with their Healthy Life Center. They still have this commitment from the city manager to provide $25,000 to help support this as well. So between our $75,000, $25 from the city, we're already $100,000. As we discussed, I think at the last work session, in the event that we can no longer provide, if ACAC goes away, the use of that facility will likely be less and subsequently the cost will be less. So I just, I feel that the risk here is, is fully well-contained. I just think we need to move this forward.
What are we currently paying for our maintenance?
We're currently, our contribution at the current time, we've been averaging over about the last decade between $40,000 and $60,000 a year out of our general fund. The other portion of that is that we also have been providing halftime custodial. So when you combine those two, that's approximately where we came up with the $75,000 figure. That was another thing that ACAC said they would help us with is custodial. And all the maintenance costs that come out, if something happens to go wrong, are all covered through our PEPAL fund, physical plant and equipment, maybe. So it, it does help us, I think, in the long run. But 75, we felt very comfortable with, just based upon past experience.
I, I think this is a great way to bring the community together, to the district work with an entity that has been around for a long time, that they're committed to do it. And that piece that you mentioned, Luke, the director, Dierdorf, about the, the transfer, that's key. That, that shows that it's good faith. I, I love that. I, I trust that you would stay with us, that you wouldn't move, but that piece, it's comfortable. And I don't think $75,000 is, I mean, it's a chunk of money, but if we're paying $50,000 to $60,000 now, I don't think it's that much more, given that we would have a state-of-the-art facility. And I'm, I'm happy that our children would be able to keep that. It is, it's something that, that is, it is important for our school district, so I am comfortable with that number.
I'll just caveat into that and say, yeah, I'm, I'm good with the number. I agreed with it last time. I still believe that that is a good number and that it's something we can function with.
Director Briggs and I have been on the same page about this for several months, actually. And, you know, 75 is kind of a number that we kind of pulled out of the air. I mean, obviously, let's all remember that we've been very fortunate for 50 years? I think we're going on 50 years, over 40, to have shared the facility and to share the operating costs with the city. That's not something that, you know, school districts across the state were able to do. And, and they had to carry the full burden in their general funds and budgets to support their pool. So, so, yeah, for us to make that, this adjustment has been a little, a little hard for some people to swallow and, and to, as, especially under the current budgetary environment for us to have to adjust to that. So I think, you know, the 75 is very reasonable, and, and we also need to keep in mind that, you know, it's going to be a few years before we open the doors, but, you know, naturally, that, that numbers, along with ACAC's contributions and the city's contributions, will have to be adjusted annually, annually for inflation, you know, so it's not going to be a, a solid, I would expect, you know, the city will give more and, you know, as time goes on. The one thing I do want to point out is that I think we're already there. Naturally, and I commend Dr. Taylor on this, as he's given us great leadership over the years on this point, he's also done that, too, in planning conservatively for what the costs are going to be for, for estimating what the operating costs are going to be. He's been throwing out the $200,000 a year, and we've crunched a lot of numbers, numbers over, over the past few years, Dr. Taylor, but I think we're there. As, as I use my pencil, I, I think our operating costs are closer to 160, because we've gotten some pretty wide range of costs related to electricity through, around the state. And, but, but when it comes to gas and chemicals and sewer and water, those are pretty consistent. But I got off the phone with the Davenport Facilities Manager, Jerry's person that, that he would be, and they've had a year of their experience, and their combined energy costs between gas and electric are about $50,000. Now, they're going to, he's going to be sending Jerry some specific numbers in the next couple, couple of weeks via email, but that is comparative to the total number that we had, oop, sorry, I had the number here before. We were estimating between gas and electric for Ames equivalents at recent, if you guys remember this form that we got in our last work session, that those total numbers were going to be somewhere at a, closer to $106,000. So it's going to be less, especially when it comes to that electricity, electricity costs, because also when we compared our, our cost estimates to the Lindmar Pool, which we're kind of modeling the pool after, there was a discrepancy in the cost for electrical costs also. So I'm confident, in my, in my mind, we're there already. With the $60,000 of actual use costs or rental fees, if we want to call it that, use fees, that ACAC, the club's going to be contributing to it. The 75 that, that we have in the city's $25,000 contributions, I think we're already there. That gap that we're concerned about, I don't even think that's going to be an issue. And yes, I commend the ACAC, and I'll probably say this many, many more times in the future, for being willing to, you know, step forward with this idea of an endowment to answer the question of what if? And, and I understand, you know, what happens if the club disappears? You know, as a swim dad and, I know that's never going to happen, but for others in the community who's, you know, understandably, they know nothing about swimming or, you know, student club athletics, there's like, well, what happens if? You know, who's going to be held, left hanging, holding the bag to pay for this 20, 30, 40 years from now? So I understand that. I, I, and I'm not going to dicker about that. That money will be set aside in the Story County Foundation account. The proceeds will, from that, will be there to back up any catastrophe that were to happen, but I, I think we're in a good place. And I think the last thing that we really need to do now, since ACAC has come forward with their gracious effort to, to raise this money, to put people at ease, we need to move forward as a board. We need to, at our, either 18th meeting or beginning of January, we need to move forward with, and give our techs, our construction manager, we'll talk about later, the, the go-ahead to get started. There's really no reason for us to wait to build this until we start building the high school. We can start building the pool sooner, and by doing that, it'll help ACAC raise money. Because they're, they're not going to be able to go out there and raise money and get commitments from people for three or five years if the building's not even going to, the pool's not even going to be able to be built for two years. That's going to be really hard for them to do, so.
So let me, since we do need to move forward, because I do believe that, that is what this is all about, is continuing to move forward. And, and I appreciate hearing from the directors tonight that it's sounding like that there is consensus that this, as we provide a broad framework of, of what we're working on, that we should continue to move forward with it. We have discussed with ACAC to continue to refine, because there are a lot of details that need to go into this 28E agreement. Our meeting with Ron Peeler, Ron Peeler was a couple of hours, so, so there is a lot of legal things, because we want to get it right. We want to establish a framework for this that can be successful for 20 years, can be successful for 50 years. But we have, we do desire to move forward because I think that, two things, number one, there's, there's a lot of interest about this in, in the community, and there, there has been, and we certainly understand that. And from my perspective, this is a capital expense. I'm, I'm pleased to hear that operationally, we are, we are thinking through these, but as we think about the capital expense, what does this look like for our community? Because this really is what it is, is we talk about ACAC and we talk about our swim team, but we are, this is a facility for our community, and I, I think that that provides some great opportunities for our community and hopefully, an opportunity to get behind it. Jason and Jeremy have shared with us that they are working very hard, and there are others, I know, that are helping them with this to start getting a hold of people. So I, I don't want us to feel like, right now, we're holding them back because they have gotten, I, I will say, they have, they are running and running hard. So we really appreciate the work that they're doing. But we do need to bring it back on the 18th so that we can have some more discussions, and we will continue to work through some of the legal work so that we can continue to get some of those agreements a little more refined. Is there any other comments from you, Dr. Taylor, or Chris? Any other things we need? I think we're in a good place. Thank you for the, the conversation and the questions and comments, directors. If there is any additional information that would be helpful on this, please let us know so that we will have Dr. Taylor identify some answers for you. So are there any comments from, or questions from the public on the pool? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move on to number seven, policies for discussion. Director Briggs?
I guess my only question is, have we had any comments on the policies come in?
We have not.
And are there any questions from the board based on the discussion that we had last time when they were announced?
I actually have a quick question-
Yeah.
-that I'll follow. You adjusted the name of- You adjusted the name of BB, well, it's BBFA, but now it's two oh one point three, from traits of effective board members to board member expectations. Can you help me? Was there a discussion there?
Oh, there was some discussion on that. And basically, what it came down to was, is we struggled as a policy committee to believe that you can dictate character traits of individuals just because you say so in policy. So rather than a name that dictates somehow that we are affecting the character of these individuals, we rather wanted to just make it what it is. And that is a policy that lays out the expectation of board members' behavior when they are at the table.
So I really appreciate it. I did not notice it until I was reviewing the, the things that you had done. And I, I had anticipated that maybe that was the answer, because to lay out the traits of effective individuals up here is, is difficult to do. But I do want to challenge our board that these are our expectations. And as the community asks lots of questions about what your role as a board member, and lots of times, there's, there's a misunderstanding about what our role is as a board member and what, what things we should be doing to most effectively serve, serve the community. So I would like to encourage all of our board members to really take a deep look at, at this policy, because I think it's very informative of the work that we do, and it's very important that we hold ourselves accountable to this. I know that as I read through it, it's, it's a great reminder for me on the role I play, the role Dr. Taylor plays, the role that we need to play together as a team. And especially in a time when our district is going to be looking for our next leader, I think it's really important for all of us to have a clear understanding and hold ourselves accountable to what our expectations are. So if you will, please take a, a deep look at that, because we will be potentially approving it next meeting. So thank you for your work on that.
Director Briggs, the, yeah, related to this, as I recall, with my work with ISAB, the, or ISB, this is pretty much bolder paid of what they recommend every school district board to throw in their policy for board expectations. And actually, they do refuse the term traits. So, and I, I think you're right in, in making that change. But, yeah, this is, that's where this language comes from.
Yeah, this, this policy does come straight from the ISB, and they, they use the term traits. And I, I kind of balked at it the last time it came up for review, and posed the idea that maybe we needed to alter it. This time, we just went ahead and had the serious discussion about it, made those changes. It doesn't change the content of the policy, it just changes some, I guess, personal belief that the way it was written before, it was somehow implying that these were character traits that people, because they've got elected the board, now possess.
Right.
And I don't think it's something, either you have those traits or you don't. I, I hope the public elects people that have those traits, but I'd rather establish the expectation of how we need to act when we're here.
Yeah, yeah. And it's, you know, again, for those of you, that, that's the, our, our association of school boards throughout the state, and that, that's where this language comes from. On another matter regarding, we had discussed at the last meeting, the changes that the policy committee recommended for board committees. And in the change under the Equity Committee, what was introduced for the first time was the idea of a board member being a chair or co-chair of the committee. That is an idea that I've thought about, a lot more about in the past couple of weeks, and I just kind of wanna, I wanna put some language, and you said you guys are meeting this Friday?
Yes, sir.
Correct? I'd like to put together some language for, for you guys to look at that would really do three things. One, introduce this to the other committees, so that we're consistent. Because again, the theory is that the, the, all of these committees are board committees. So I, I think that idea of having them be chaired by the, by a member of the board is a good idea. Secondly, I'd like to incorporate in that the idea of the, the frequency in our packet, our envelope tonight, and something that hasn't been a part of the policy, but I think it should be put into policy in the expectation of what the frequency of these meetings should be for particular committees. Because to be very frank, there are some committees that didn't meet those expectations in, in my service in the past two years, which, that's why I think they should be in the policy. And lastly, I'd like to propose that we have the requirement changed for meeting notice of how, when it needs to be done, how early, and, and to have that discussion. So just to, I'll, I'll put it on paper, I'll bring it to you guys, or get it to you for, for you guys to talk about.
I said, paper or email's a great way to communicate it, too.
Yeah. And I'll, and then, and then we can go from there. So it'll be those three things. So will we poll this, then?
And that's what I'm getting from this, is you, you would like us to poll the policy reference board committees, two zero two point one, to bring it back to committee for Friday's discussion.
Sure.
And then, obviously, if we make changes to it, we'll bring it back through the process that it's going through right now. If we don't, I think we can probably just imply that, or not imply, but make the, the statement of how we looked at it, but didn't change it, and probably bring it back into the process. But we'll at least poll it for now, look at it, see if we need to make changes. If we do, we'll start the process over.
Okay, thank you.
And just for the good of the public and, and for our board members, by polling it, that provides us an opportunity to have a discussion, one meeting, then it moves on to an action item. So to make significant changes, that's why we would poll it before we would, in order to move the others along, but poll the one. So, thank you. Any other comments on the policies for discussion? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we will go ahead and move on, and under the public forum, Mr. Jakobson, come on up.
Good night, and thank you very much to give me opportunity to speak for you.
Mr. Jakobson, please remember to, your name and your address before you speak. Thank you.
My name, Alex Jakobson. I have two kids right now in the school district, and what else?
We just need your address.
To run this school district, it's, it's a very complex job. You need to be really smart, because it's so many factors and it's, and especially names. We have so many different, different people by intellectual levels and ethnic levels. So I strongly believe people who can run this district, they can run whole country. Because only differences between probably this district and country, we don't have military to occupy another district, and then, thanks God, they don't have military to occupy us. But other things, it's, it's, it's very, it's very close, and like I told, who can run this district can run the country. So, but sometimes I feeling behind this routine, behind these small details, goal and purpose of the schools district, or on the generally goal, why we, what we're doing can be lost. And sometimes, when the people say, oh, you need to keep the rule, I'm not sure if this really rules to keep the, to move forward to, to, to the goal, to reach the goal, or just keep our current situation. I give you one example, what bothered me from last, last year. I just received again some paper on last Friday, what it generally says, I can't get a record from the bus on my child, because it's private property of the company. So this was how I see, and of course, it's my name of some, some law and rules, but if somebody who have simple logic can believe person who pay taxes for made this record, and record deed on his own child, and now it's somebody private property, if to somebody it's look right, somebody privatize my child, information about my child, I don't think it's, it's right. Now, I struggle to get it more than a year. So when you have, I believe it's, it's strong violation of, of my rights and my child's rights, when this done without any consequences, people who doing this, they feel comfortable to raise the level. So I was sent by some leaders of this district, they sent to me two officers, they threatened me, if I continue to ask the questions, if I continue to be annoying, I could be arrested and, and maybe even charged. So, you know, guys, I, I was come from Soviet Union, and, and it's a strong reason why I come to here, and because I strongly believe on individual freedom and freedom of speech per social happiness. So I don't bring my kids to see the things again. I was arrested myself, because I asked, in Soviet Union, I was asked some question about their food, food supply, they, they just framed me and put me in a jail. So this what about the rules? When those officers come, and then again, they talk about the rules. So you see, Mrs. Fratson, when you're talking about the rules, I, I don't know what exactly you mean. Now, how I judge, like, between authoritarian, I, I'm a simple man, so I, I don't understand really how American system work, so I have my simple, simple system, how to check, is it authoritarian system, community, or it's run, authoritarian guys run community, or, or people, or it's open. So like, for example, I don't know who is wife of Vladimir Putin. I don't know what he kids doing, because he told, what I'm doing, it's with my family, it's separate. However, I have no who children and wife of previous president Barack Obama, or Donald Trump. People not only look in this information, speak about, about their wives and kids, they even, they even discuss about what they wearing, how they play the golf. So last two weeks, I tried to found any sign, board or leader of the, or leader of the district, ready for some compromise. I didn't found this sign yet. So I strongly hope you guys revolate, especially, my specifically question for the leaders of this, of this company, for this district, you revolate this behavioral, because if not, again, again, I going to ask another round of the question and investigation. Because again, I didn't come, and I don't bring my kids to be in same situation when I was thirty years ago in Soviet Union. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent items.
We have minutes from the meeting held on November twentieth, the personnel report, there are gifts to the district, which include winter clothing and boots from On Media to Edwards Mitchell and Meeker Schools. We have plates and serving baskets from Tanner's Grill to the high school for John Crawl's Level Three classroom, and cash in the amount of seven hundred forty-four dollars and six cents from Anonymous towards the demolition of Old Edwards. I did check with Ms. Chris this morning. The Old Edwards neighborhood has collected now, in the neighborhood, a little bit over one hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, is a donation to the district for the demolition of that building. And Jerry, I think, is coming very, very close to wrapping that up and being able to turn that over to the city very quickly. We also have three contracts or agreements, which include the one with Walsworth Yearbooks for the middle school, and agreements with Steve's Mobile Music for DJ services, also at the middle school for dance, and a memorandum of understanding with the Boys and Girls Club of Story County with Dr. Jones and Erica, who happens to be here at the present time.
I'll entertain a motion.
I was gonna say, I move the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Rosser, seconded by Deardorff. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes six zero. Moving on to action items, we will take item number five, which is the two thousand eighteen nineteen Modified Supplemental Amount Application. Someone wants to make a motion on that.
I move approval of the two thousand eighteen to nineteen Modified Supplemental Amount Application for Dropout Prevention, as presented.
Second. Moved by Deardorff, seconded by Perez. Any discussion?
That was the motion for five?
That's the motion for five?
Thank you. Just clarifying.
Yep, yep. All those in favor, the motion is to approve the two thousand eighteen nineteen Modified Supplemental Amount Application for Dropout Prevention, the application of budget is provided. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes six zero. Now we will go ahead and move to item twelve, the construction manager for the high school and pool projects.
I reckon, it is recommended that the board offer a contract for construction management services for the new Ames High School project, Story Construction of Ames, Iowa.
Second.
It's moved by Deardorff, seconded by Briggs. Discussion.
We, we had a really good meeting, where we sat down and we interviewed the two finalists. Both Story and TOK came and put on some great, some great interviews for us and answered a lot of questions. At the end of the day, I know for myself personally, I, I felt that very much both companies were equal to each other. Some minor variances in how they do things philosophically, maybe, but on the up and up, I, I didn't feel that we were going to end up with a bad choice. I felt that both were very excellent choices, and I look forward to moving forward on this project with Story Construction.
Any other comments?
I have a couple of questions for Jared. And first of all, I agree with what has been said regarding, we had some great contractors come in and, and offer their services for this. And I'd like to thank them all for doing that. And when it came down to the two that the Facilities Committee recommended to the full board, I think we all agreed that, you know, we're not gonna make a bad decision here. Either way we go is, is probably gonna be good, because they both have good reputations and, you know, most of every, most of everything that was identified, and actually, I'll say, everything that was identified in our RFP that we asked for was definitely answered. I, I did, though, because we all scored, just like the Facilities Committee did, and members of the, Jerry and others that are on the Facilities Committee, in addition to those that are board members, we also scored the, the applicants for, in the following way, and I just want to share this with the public, the owner objectives, and the owner there, here is the school district. You know, we, we described in our RFP what our expectations were, our objectives, what we're looking for from, from the company. The, we will also evaluate them under their construction management role, how they, how they foresee themselves in the construction management role. Then we also ask them about their construction management services, how they provide them, what they'd be providing to the district in, in the process. Then the last two are planning and communication structure, how they plan to communicate with themselves in the construction process, but also with the board, the district, and, and other stakeholders. And then lastly, we, there was one, why them? Why, why their, their firm, why they felt they were the best Why why their their firm, why they felt they were the best firm to take on this project? So it was pretty close as as the the ratings came through as I'm looking at this, which reflects on our first, you know, blush at it saying, well, either way we go, it's gonna be kind of a win. But there are some differences that I do want to point out that over last week, I felt last Monday evening when we had our meeting, we kind of glossed over and I talked to Jerry and Chris and and some others and I also spoke to both firms, to Mike and also Steve at the two firms to clarify the numbers. And this is the question that I have for Jerry is the the actual cost difference between the two for the construction management services. And Jerry, what'd you get up with? Now, this is the same number that Jerry, that I came up with too, so, but Jerry, go ahead.
So I took the information in the RFP and did some work with the numbers. On Hala's estimate for the learning landscape, they provided a range, so I took the conservative, the high side of that range. They had it broken down into construction costs, FFNE, which is furniture fixtures and equipment. They had phasing premium and then the soft cost, which includes the design fees for architect as well as the CM fees and testing and commissioning. They also applied a contingency and escalation, so I worked with those numbers to try and identify and distribute the contingency and escalation over the whole group of breakdown in order to find what the construction cost was. I took a mathematical approach to be able to understand what the construction cost was so that I could apply that to the construction manager fees that were identified in each of the proposal requests. And when I did that, the range was between 2 million and 8 million for the fees. The top four were between 4 and 6 and a half. Story's estimate for a four-year project was for estimated fees according to the way I took an approach at it was $6,452,000. TOK for the four-year estimated timeframe was just under 6 million. And then I can go ahead and explain that, but that's the basic comparison on a four-year time of construction. Story did awful also offer a three-year time of construction and when I calculated that out, it came out to 5.7 million.
Right, right. And that's something that we would investigate with TOK if we went with them, if we could, because, you know, we have to come up with the the answers to that, whether we can do it in three years or not.
Just reporting the numbers, yes.
Yeah, we'd all love to get it done sooner than later, that's for sure. So the bottom line was is that, you know, I sit back and I'm like, we're looking at a half million dollars and that a half million dollars is money that can be spent on nicer science classrooms, other parts of the high school, the theater, auditorium, you know, there's, that that's real money. It's not just, you know, if we're talking, you know, 50, 100, even 200,000 dollars, but but half million dollars is a difference, but I mean, you can't say it's not a difference. Yes, in the big scheme of things, you know, it's a big project, close to, you know, we're talking about 95, 98 million dollars for the high school alone. So that that was one thing I just wanted to point out that that I was concerned about. And then secondly is that TOK's bid, not so much that, even though this is a important thing, is that they're a known commodity. We've had a great relationship with them for the past six years. They did a great job for us from everything I've been told and heard regarding the elementary schools and that, you know, shouldn't be ignored. And then lastly, what I was most intrigued about in their proposal and in their presentation when we had the interview last Monday was the emphasis that they put on pre-construction effort and costs and compared to Stories. Now, that, the way I interpreted that was really two, two things. One, that meant that they're gonna spend more time with the stakeholders to helping us decide what we want, high school principal, teachers, staff, parents, school board, in addition to working with the architect and the contract and the other contractors to make sure that even before we start moving dirt and pouring concrete and putting up walls, we've designed something that we want. And that process helps avoid change orders because my experience in serving on the city council, my experience of friends and others in the community, everyone says with big projects like this is, the big cost is your, is change orders, you want to keep those down. And Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, our change orders with the elementary projects were pretty minimal, weren't they like under 2%?
Yes, they varied a little bit between, but I think the average was around or below 2% for all five or six projects.
Yeah, and that's, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
That's really good. And and that shows because I think we learned through from each elementary school to each elementary school, from Mitchell and then onward, that with each one, I think we got a little better. But but I think we we all learned from that. We learned from it, they learned from it and so that their relationship is there and and that's something that, you know, relationships are important, whether you're building something or you're, you know, figuring out a budget or developing policy. That that's kind of, you know, some of the thoughts that I've had over the last week. So based on those thoughts, I I I'm hesitant to go a Story Construction at this time because of the fact that we've got differences in what they proposed and their emphasis primarily on, well, three things. The difference in the cost, the differences in the focus that they're gonna put on the pre-construction phase, and then lastly, that, you know, we've had a really good experience with TOK for the past, past, past six years. That's all.
Other comments?
I just feel I'm gonna be supporting this motion. I think there's consensus among the board at the last meeting that Story had a better approach to construction management than TOK. I agree that TOK did did some good work for us, however, there was some deficiencies. Their closeout process primarily was one that was, I thought, sorely lacking in how long it took to get things done. In addition to that, through our facilities meetings, I was always, always my desire for them to lead us along this journey and I felt they were more along for the journey. I feel that that Story Construction would do a much better job leading us through this very complicated orchestra of of moving this high school along. So again, I just, I'm gonna be supporting this motion because I feel that that they're the type of choice for us.
I think as I look at the financial information that we've been presented, these two firms, while we've talked about that that they both really provided excellent presentations Monday night, they are the two middle firms in terms of costs. So the, I understand that there's a concern that there's a difference in the cost, but they are both very close when you look at all of the applications that we did receive. So for me, I'm not as concerned with that difference at this point because I know that we do still need to negotiate the final amount with them and I I think that's key. And Jerry wants to talk, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
I'm just gonna actually echo that same thing because it, here's what their contract looks like. I don't think we sent this to you, but I don't know if you do want to really read it, but it, this contract right now has no name, it has no dollar sign. That's because we meet with them on the 14th. What you're giving approval tonight is for us to go meet with Story County, to offer them this contract, to negotiate it and see if we can come up with an agreement that we can bring back for your approval on the 18th.
I understand that, yeah.
So the one thing I just want to point out, these aren't, this isn't a bid, okay? I just, it's a, it's, what the idea was in the RFP was to get a rough idea about what the relative range of the cost might be for these services, understanding that it's a complex matter and that we need to be able to coordinate and work out and negotiate what's gonna be in the contract, what's not, what services they're gonna provide and so on. So I just want to put that into perspective.
And and my point was just merely that that we had some outliers and then we had some that were close together and and it just so happens that the two that we did have interviews with Monday night were two that were were closer than some of these outliers. So another thing that I, that I do want to be clear with the public, that that we were pleased with the work that TOK did. We we received great service, we've got excellent facilities, we're sitting in one now, but we've got some excellent facilities out in our elementaries renovated and new that that our students and our staff are are getting the opportunity to enjoy. I think anytime you go through a process like this, it allows you the opportunity to take a good hard look at what is the project now because it's different. The high school is a different project. It's our elementary schools, there's some, many of our community members that will never set foot in some of our elementary schools, but our high school is going to be, going to be a point of pride. It has our fine arts area, it has our athletic area, and so to me, you look at that, this opportunity through a different lens because this is going to be a true point of, a place for all of our community to be. So I look at it differently. So when I say that I I will be voting for Story tonight, it's not because I wasn't pleased with TOK's work that they've done with us, but I am very excited about some of the opportunities that Story County provide, Story County, Story Construction provided in their interview with us Monday night, so.
And I'll echo off of that. I I am very happy with the work that we got from TOK. I I think they did what we needed to at the time. I think they were the best qualified applicant that we had at the time. Obviously, it's a different time, it's a different building, it's a different process. We we had another option, we looked at it, we weighed it. I I won't tell you what score people got, but I will tell you that in my own independent evaluation, I had a three-point difference between the two of them, three points. They're pretty much neck and neck even. I think they're gonna do a good job no matter what we decide and I will support going with Story County as it, excuse me, Story Construction, as it would appear that that was the final outcome of the evaluative process of the board collectively, that they were the one that was the best qualified as a consensus, so I support that.
Great. We will go ahead and vote. It's been moved by Deardorff, seconded by Briggs. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay? We've got, I was indicating nay, I said aye, sorry. Passes five one, thank you. Items from the board.
I guess I just, I'll caveat a little something off of the conversation that we had presented to us tonight by Alex Jakobsen and what I want to say is just simply put, it is a practice of the board, a policy of the board for the protection of our students that we do not release video of any of our kids, whether it be on a bus or in a classroom, because there's no way of of safely removing identifiable information to other students. And while you as a parent do have a right to the confidential information regarding your child, you do not have a right to access information that is confidential to another child. And that is why the video information that he was referencing is not being released. And that is a board policy, it is a practice of law and that's why the district stands on that position. So if there's any question out there as to why that would be the understanding.
I just want to take a moment to thank the staff. I did appreciate an email that was sent out by the building principals, I believe earlier in the week, talking about expectations for our kids. And at times as parents, I think we all go through, oh, if we pull our kid out, it's just one day, what's a big deal? But I think it was just a good reminder of how, the importance of having our kids at school. So I just want to thank, it was unsolicited and I thought was a great way of reaching out to parents to to make sure we're, we as board members support the expectation that we need our kids in class, so thank you for doing that.
So we had a recent retirement announced up here and I wanted to let you all know that I have started doing some heavy research on what that process might look like, what some opportunities might look like for us in terms of some support we can receive through our district, but also then support that we can receive through some of the firms that are available. So I will be bringing more concrete information back to you on the 18th, that right now is my plan to go through. I've had some conversations with Dr. Taylor and some other staff to try to get some things rolling. I've also reached out, I met with Harriet Hildenthal from IASB this morning and we had a great conversation about some opportunities that we can take advantage of and and some things that we can discuss. So just want you to know that, yes, I'm working on it and more to come in the next couple of weeks.
And since you mentioned IASB, I'll add that, yes, they're gonna have some great resources for us to take advantage in in that area, but also that you're gonna start hearing this from me as we gear up for the next legislative session. And I know we don't want to realize it because it's the holidays that are coming up and people want to focus on that and the last thing they want to think about is, you know, politics in January, but that's the reality and it's gonna be very important to public education and the school district in particular for for the next year in what happens in the legislature. So we have our priorities that I'm gonna be going out to PT, PTOS and PTAs and talking about starting, actually later this this month already, but into January and asking parents to get involved in in a number of important issues that the legislature will be bringing up that will have a direct impact on our our students in our classrooms that and and our future of of the district. So it's gonna be, stay tuned and, but the one I will point out right now is it sounds and we're hearing good things about the possibility that the penny sales tax, which was intended and passed in in about 2007, 2008 as a property tax saving effort, but also it helps fund our our local schools with that penny sales tax. And that's something that has greatly assisted us in building our elementary schools over in in the past and and other projects and it will be critical for our future district in the future. Right now, that is planned to 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 stop in 2029 and the legislature this spring will be asked to extend that till 2050, you know, instead of 49, just round it to 50. But that's gonna be critical for for us to move forward with our our building project. So if anybody does have, that's watching at home, if he bump into you during the next, you know, months or two months or so, if you bump into one of our, your local state representatives, please mention to them that the penny sales tax is important to us for property tax, keeping our property taxes down and keeping our schools good and healthy and making sure that students and teachers have a good place to learn.
Items from the staff.
On our December 18 meeting, we'll be bringing back policies for action, obviously, but we'll also be bringing another list of policies for announcements to the public because we do have a policy committee meeting this Friday. And also hopefully next time, an approval of a contract for a construction management firm. There is an update and I see Dwayne is sitting in the back. Dwayne is gonna come back with a update from his high school committee, the S committee that's been out there already and he has been beating the streets in the rubber chicken circuit quite heavy and on behalf of the district and we can't thank him enough for all of that. I would kind of tell the board that right now you might want to take a breath. Things may seem just a little bit slow, but when January 1 hits, it's gonna be unbelievable for you because of not only what we're dealing with the pool, but also the high school, but you throw into that your search for a new superintendent and many of the things that are coming out of our school improvement committee also and teaching and learning will be coming back at you, so this is a time to catch your breath and get ready for the new year. Speaking of that, I believe Dr. Ross is taking a crew to Pleasant Valley, which is over along the river. It's also actually almost part of Bettendorf, but she's going over there next week with a group to watch the, or get some tips from them on their implementation of foundations. The audit report may come back in January, early January perhaps, Chris has her fingers crossed on that. The Iowa Report Card, which kind of comes back to the attendance thing that Luke mentioned a second ago, and also we do have a district-wide workshop in January on the same day as the Martin Luther King Celebration. Winter break begins on December 20. In the information that I provided to the board, there are several things that are in there. There is an IASB Day on the Hill Conference on Tuesday, January 30th, if you'd like to There is an IASB Day on the Hill Conference on Tuesday, January 30th, if you'd like to attend that. You can let me know, there is an early registration through IASB to do that, but you can let us know, and we'll get, let Kim know, and we'll get you signed up for that one. I wanted to just come back a little bit to that holiday attendance letter. I think people kinda had the wrong impression of that in some way. This United Way is connected with a group, not only with us, but with a group known as Attendance Works, which is a national organization that's trying to advance student success by reducing what we call chronic absenteeism. This letter actually is one of the tools that was offered by Attendance Works, really to try and help families consider how they can give the gift, as it says, of an education. But ultimately, everybody knows, the decision is up to the parents. What I want to remind, I think, people in the community of, is that attendance is part of the Iowa Report Card. And at the current time, from the information that we have, we have nearly 10% of our students that are chronically absent. That means approximately 400 kids are gone every day. It's a very important stat, I think, to keep in mind, and the reason that we sent that out is partly because it was associated with Attendance Work, but it's also partly associated with a systemic effort to remind people that attendance is really critical for student achievement, and I'll let it drop right at that point. Also, in the information that I provided to the board, there is a new list of your board committees that does combine the two county and city conference boards together into one, and also does change the one committee from diversity to equity. So I believe this is an updated list that you have in your package now of all the people that are involved in that. I wanted to give you a real quick read on one thing, and that's something that I found today, actually, from the United States Department of Education, which considers narrowing the scope of civil rights investigations that we have to do. And it's not looking at it as a systemic larger problem, they're trying to essentially say, well, we can take care of these faster if all you have to do is just deal with that one, and not realize if there's a larger systemic issue going on within, say, schools or universities. But it's a very short read for your information. I promised you some information relative to the flooding situation that we have on this particular property on the west side of some of our neighbors. And last but not least, I wanted to update you on elementary enrollment, and just as a reminder, as you look at that, the way that's read is pretty simple. For instance, in Edwards Kindergarten, we have three sections, which means that we can hold 75 students there. We currently have 66, so we have room for nine more. You'll notice that at Edwards, that we are full in fourth grade, we're full in fifth, at Fellows, we're full in fourth, at Meeker, we're full in third and fourth, Mitchell, first in five, and Sawyer, one and two. The good news here is our enrollment is increasing. The bad news is, we have to take a look at this as possible issues coming up in the future relative to classroom space. Anything else from the staff over there that you wanted to add? I knew they wouldn't. Thank you very much.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second. Moved by Rossar, seconded by Perez. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six zero. Thank you.